I'd like to call the, I'd like to call the meeting of the, there's some kind of issues to order. I would be coming here, I guess I'm gonna say I'm glad to see you, but I know in a minute. Uh, I'd like to call the meeting to order, Mr. Evans, Section 17, please.
Yes, sir, I'd like to call Mr. Williams Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, I want to give the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, I ask that everyone exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right. Then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross the street to either of our parking lots to be safely away from the building. Our staff will help provide direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway where we will remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter in the building, we will: Run if there is an accessible escape path, try to evacuate the premises. Hide if you cannot evacuate, please find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found, lock any doors that you can. Fight as a last resort and only if your life is in imminent danger. Our staff will provide assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
You're talking about our Father to give thanks for another beautiful day. He asks that you bless our minds and our hearts when we may be concerned about things that make our county a better place than just to live. Help us to think of anything that'll prosper for us. Bless us as we share with your Christ's name and pray. Next item on the agenda, the call of public hearing for order to receive citizen comments and questions relative to proposed change in County Animal Service. No, minutes, you have missed one. Miss, I appreciate you being able to, uh, in your agenda package, uh...
Motion to approve.
Questions? All in favor, that be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have nine minutes after next under. Public hearing is called for order to receive citizen comments and questions relative to proposed change to animal, County Animal Service processes. The public hearing is called for order. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public, the public notice?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, January 6th, 2020, I believe it's supposed to be February 6th, 2020. February 3rd, 2020, 7:00 PM in the Commissioners' Room in the Administrative Building, 201 St. Andrews Street, 1201. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider and act on proposed amendments to Article 2 Animal Services and Article 1 Wild and Wild animals of the Edgecombe County Code of Ordinances. Opposed amendments are intended to clarify and improve provisions of County's Code of Ordinances to better protect the welfare of animals and to protect the public. A copy of the proposed amendment is displayed by Public Inspection, the Office of County Manager, and the County Administration Building, 402 St. Andrews Street, 1201, 2786 during regular business hours. The copy may also be viewed on the County's website at Edgecombe County, the seat of God. All parties interested are invited and urged to be present to make their views known. Anyone with a physical limitation or language barrier that will need special accommodations at the public hearing should call 252-641-7834 at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. Ranger Mungo, Department of the Board. Mr. Chairman, I believe that was, the hearing was called to order last month, January, and was continued, held open today.
This is a recess, be...
That's why the day was long enough.
This is a recess call, okay? Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At your January meeting, you opened the public hearing to consider changes to the county's ordinances pertaining to animal services. The changes proposed by the Animal Welfare Advisory Council include adding in Article 2, Section 4-33, for quote "adequate shelter," under the description for what does not constitute adequate shelter, the word "metal" to barrels. So in other words, they are recommending adding that word to say that barrels can be used for shelter but not metal barrels. They also recommend changes to Article 3, which are numerous. Summary, the changes include reference to inherently dangerous animals instead of wild and exotic animals as apparently is. It defines what inherently dangerous animals are. It bans inherently dangerous animals in the county with the noted exceptions. And it leaves the responsibility of permitting and enforcement of those exceptions to the appropriate state and federal agencies. You continue the public hearing in order to give the Animal Welfare Advisory Council another opportunity to clarify the definition of inherently dangerous animals. They have done so, and the public hearing is presented for your purposes. I recommend that you, excuse me, reopen the public hearing on this matter. Pending public comments, the recommendation of the Animal Welfare Advisory Council is to approve the ordinance changes as presented. Um, I'd like to mention that Ms. Kathy Williams, who is the chairperson of the Advisory Council, is here, and if she'll come up in case you have questions. While she's making her way up, if you'll look, excuse me, in your package, you'll see just behind my memo, the first page for Section 4-33, you'll see noted a little over halfway down the page, in red, recommendation to add the word "metal" in front of barrels. Turning over to the next page, I won't go through this, as you've seen, as quite detailed, but I do want to point out that at the bottom of Page 1, in red there, you will see the definition of inherently dangerous animals. And it's quite detailed, and I appreciate the Advisory Council, you know, being meticulous in going through that, making sure to, uh, within an ordinance that will protect our citizens but not be overly restrictive for animals that may be commonly kept, not commonly, but sometimes kept, but not necessarily inherently dangerous. On Page 2, near the bottom, you'll see that Section 4-133 is the section, or is proposed to be the section, which talks about the possession of inherently dangerous animals being prohibited. You'll see there in that paragraph in red, the exceptions that are listed. So the exceptions include lawfully operated pet shops, zoological parks, or exhibitors that are licensed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, scientific research laboratories, circuses, carnivals, and veterinarians, provided that they are maintained in ways that will prevent them from escaping, and persons temporarily transporting such animals through the county so as long as transit time is not more than 24 hours. Certainly, all the sections, particularly the changes recommended, are important, but I wanted to draw your attention to those in particular. So again, Ms. Kathy Williams is here, is the voice of our Advisory Council, and I want to thank her and the rest of the members of all the hard work they put into this.
At this time, we'd like to reopen the hearing for public comments. Is there anybody here to speak? If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Is there anybody here to speak? Hearing none? I'd like to adjourn the public hearing, and the recommendation is to approve the changes as presented. Is there a motion?
Certainly.
Questions? All in favor, that be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? It is approved. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time, especially as I look at some of this, you know, existing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Schedule appointment, um, we ask Sheriff, would you please come forward, uh, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, so the sheriff has to deal with, uh, he's gonna have Chief Deputy Gene Harold to give a presentation on his behalf, and then Sheriff, I believe, to...
Good enough, good man.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to stand before you, and thank Sheriff Agathon for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Office. You have in front of you, I believe, what we call the State of the Office of the Sheriff's, 2019. The purpose of this presentation is to give you an overview of what is going on within your Sheriff's Office, and a forecast of issues to be addressing and future needs. A majority of the focus will be on salaries. You will see later that the salary issues are continually hurting us with recruiting and retaining staff members, mainly in detention centers and amongst our deputies. Just a few facts about the Sheriff's Office. The Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office is a force over 140 people. It's comprised of the following divisions: our support staff, our office staff, telecommunications, detention center, animal service, and our sworn deputies. The deputies are organized into four separate divisions: our Uniform Patrol Division, our Civil Division, our Criminal Investigations Narcotics Division, and our School Resource Offices. When Sheriff Agathon was first appointed, he interviewed all deputies and questioned us about our values. From this, the values you seek for you are what we are to live by, with respect, integrity, and professionalism being our core of the values. Throughout this presentation, you'll see money that is generated by the Sheriff's Office, as well as some of the expenses that we incur. North Carolina General Statute 14-415.19 addresses fees from each concealed carry permit. In 2019, 863 concealed carry weapon applications were processed. Thirty-five dollars of each was supposed to come back to the Sheriff's Office. A total of $30,205 was brought in from these permits, and to our knowledge, these funds never reached back to the Sheriff's Office. We understand that detention centers are very costly. Captain Washington, our jail administrator, and Sheriff Agathon do all they can to cut costs anywhere that will not jeopardize the safety of our staff and inmates, and to make up for these costs by bringing in revenue. A few of the ways that we generate revenue. In 2019, we housed 607 federal inmates, 344 state inmates under the misdemeanor confinement program, our paytale system, our commissary, and the county has paid $35 per hour for personnel that we have to sit with federal inmates while at the hospital. The total revenue from the detention center in 2019, $1,050,736.33. Within our detention center, we have ongoing staffing issues, doing lawmark to salaries. There are 57 detention positions. Currently, we have eight vacancies, one upcoming retirement, and five who have gave notice to us that they are looking employment elsewhere. In 2019, we lost nine detention officers, six to better paying jobs, two of those went to the Pitt County Detention Center, one for disciplinary reasons, and two for medical reasons. We had compiled a list of surrounding agency salaries, with Edgecombe County being $27,065. And if you'll see Pitt County, where we lost those two detention officers, their starting salary for detention was $41,000. These are what our detention officers face on a daily basis. They are assaulted by the inmates, of course, the inmates assault each other, they have to deal with death of inmates while in custody, numerous sprinkler heads have been broken. Over age, some of the doors in the detention center are able to be manipulated by the inmates to where, when they're locked in their cells, they can get out on their own. We're working closely with our maintenance department to see if we can fix the situation. They're having to use force, continuous flooding of the cells, and they have to deal with communicable diseases. Again, you'll see the starting salary for our detention officers is $27,065, which equals $13.01 per hour. A little research showed that the average starting salary at lawmark, $14.26, and it lows $13.01. Our Control Division, in 2019, they took 1,163 incident reports, ranging from state hostage to homicide. Thirty-nine thousand, 606 calls for service. We have an immediate need for body counts. I'm not gonna go through all of this data, but I would like to highlight a few. In 2019, our deputies conducted 21,945 house and business checks. This is a service that we provide to our citizens and our businesses at zero cost. They responded to 699 motor vehicle wrecks. Due to a shortage of the state highway patrol troopers, our deputies are having to respond to these wrecks. These tire deputies up for hours at a time, waiting on approval to arrive. We unlocked 178 vehicles, which is a service that we provide to our citizens, whether they're in town or in the county, at no charge. Tarver Police Department offers the same service, but they do charge a bit. 545 escorts, with a lot of these being funerals. We are called in the city of Rocky Mount to provide funeral escorts, but Rocky Mount PD charges for this service, and we do it at no cost. We conducted 518 mental transports, 518. We transport people daily to locations such as Raleigh, Garner, Ahoski, Jacksonville, Winston-Salem, Charlotte, Thomasville, and Keenonsville. These transports are only made by the Sheriff's Office, and they keep our staff out of the county sometimes for an entire shift. A few numbers about our traffic enforcement. Traffic enforcement is a very important role for law enforcement. As you can see from the listed data, it often reveals more crimes being committed. Forty-six DWI's is an impressive number for an agency that does not have a designated traffic unit or traffic officer on each squad. I've also highlighted 9,925 credits were earned for Governor's Highway Safety Program. These credits are used to receive equipment at no cost to the county. The staffing issues continue with our patrol. In large part to our salaries, we have 57 positions available for deputies, seven vacant positions as of today. In 2019, we lost nine deputies, six to better paying jobs, one of those to Rocky Mount Police Department, two to Pine Tops Police Department, one to Tarver Police Department, one to the town of Tarver, and one who took a magistrate's position in Halifax County. Two deputies were lost for disciplinary reasons, and one retired. There's a lot of significance about these two photographs here. To your left, to the left of the screen, I'm sorry, you will see Sergeant Dozier. To the right, Captain Dozier. Sergeant Dozier retired with 30 years from the town of Tarver, with only 18 years of those in law enforcement. He was responsible for the supervision of full personnel during his career. Captain Dozier is still part of our team and a member of our senior command staff. He has 27 years of law enforcement experience, all here at the Sheriff's Office, and under his command supervises over 40 deputies. When Sergeant Dozier retired, his salary was $5,000 more than Captain Dozier. The picture on this slide says a lot. This was a motor vehicle crash that our deputies responded to out on the Central Forest between Tarver and Rocky Mount, near what we call Lady Bell. You'll count six of our deputies down in that room, five of them standing in the water, assisting the first responders in getting this lady out of this vehicle. We've noticed that with the ability to earn holiday pay, our sergeants at the end of the year are making just as much money as our lieutenants. One of the first things Sheriff Agathon did after being appointed was to form his command staff. Your sheriff's command staff has close, if not over, 200 years of combined service and experience. It consists of the senior deputies and senior detention officers. Six of these command staff members are required to be on call, a week at a time, for every, every six weeks. They are not paid to be on call, and they are not being paid overtime in the event that they are called out. And the reason the word homicide is up there is past October, our entire command staff was called out for a homicide. It stayed out probably 12 to 13 hours that day with no compensation. I'm working with Mr. Evans in this booth on the next bullet point. We have learned that for the past 11 years, we have been turning in 13 timesheets and only receiving 12 paychecks. County policy states that law enforcement works a 28-day cycle. It does not match up with the county's pay cycle of the 21st to the 20th of each month. We turn in 13 timesheets during a one-year period. Doing the math, our five-day deputies for the past 11 years have worked around 140 hours each year with no compensation. Our patrol deputies have been working around 123 hours each year with no compensation. There's no salary range for experienced or merit-based paid employees, or for advanced certifications, education degrees, or years of service, which we are finding with exit interviews for people that leave us, they have no incentive to stay. Without any cost of living increase, a six-year veteran will make the same salary as a deputy that has been employed here for six days, unless that six-year veteran has received somebody's promotion during this six years. We are certainly thankful for the cost of living increase that we received last year, and we would like to keep it in proportion to inflation. Just out of this last basic law enforcement training class put on at Edgecombe Community College, I have two cadets ready to come to the Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office. Nash County went and did their recruitment pitch, and lost those two residents to the Nash County Sheriff's Office. Just a list of salaries of our surrounding agencies, with Rocky Mount Police Department topping the list at the starting of $38,000, with Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office at the bottom, our starting salary for a deputy is $30,488, and these figures came from 2018. Our Civil Division. During 2019, our Civil Division served, received 3,000, excuse me, child support papers received were $3,042. The civil papers that were received were $11,580. We hired retired deputies to work security in our courthouse. This keeps us from having to short-staff our patrol division by moving deputies into the courthouse. These retirees work currently for $10 an hour, and we would like to see that here for some time with our deputies. Our child support, the 4D Division. We learned that there were some issues to where our paper service wasn't where it needed to be. We worked on those issues, and I think we currently have it back up to where it needed to be. We are under contract with the Department of Social Services to provide three deputies to work child support-related duties. Well, according to the contract that we have, there should be a lieutenant, a sergeant, and a deputy assigned to child support. The contract states that the lieutenant should be paid $54,591. His actual salary being paid by the county, $50,583.73. According to the contract, the sergeant should be paid $46,637. He is actually being paid by the county $43,711.06. The deputy should be paid $33,377, according to the contract, but is only being paid Training is very important for us. The more training we receive, the better we can serve. We go above and beyond the minimum requirements set by the Sheriff's Training Standards Division. Our deputies are required to have at least 24 hours of training each year, with four of those being in the concentration of followers. Our detention officers must complete 16 hours, our telecommunications also must complete 16 hours. We try to provide all of our mandatory training in-house, to try to reduce travel costs. We have instructors on the staff that are certified by the North Carolina Criminal Justice Training Standards Division. We're required to have bloodborne pathogens, which is required by OSHA each year, as well as hazardous materials. We have specialized certifications such as DCI Operator and Toximeter Operator, TASER. TASER, we're required to recertify one day every three years. We go above and beyond these standards, as I've said before. And since 2018, Sheriff Agathon has made us do some sort of physical fitness training once a year. These are just some of the specialized instructors that we have, so we don't have to rely on the other agencies to come in and teach us what we need to know. We have an entire training coordinator, several following instructors, a hazardous materials instructor, subject control and arrest techniques instructor, PT instructors, TASER instructors, and we have a detention officer certification coordinator. We also partner with Edgecombe Community College, Tarver Police Department, and other agencies for more specialized training. In 2019, our deputies received 2,176 hours of mandatory in-service training. Our detention officers received 832 hours. Our telecommunications received 260 hours. Our telecommunications received two hundred and sixty hours. As I've said before, all of this mandatory training is conducted in-house. We went above the training, sending officers to specialized courses such as crisis intervention, investigations training, school resource officer training, and civil process and other classes. We exceeded our mandatory training hours greater than twelve. Our training center Dodge City reopened in February of nineteen. It is now fully equipped with donated equipment. It is maintained by our agency at little to no cost to the county. Its use is highly requested, and the use of the training center is traded for costly specialized trainings such as state highway patrol driver training and high-res tactical training. This is just a list of the items that we have replaced at the training center since the last flood, and all thirty-two of these items were donated. Our training center consists of two classrooms, a large classroom capable of seating about forty students, and a smaller classroom capable of seating about twelve. We have a K-9 training area. We have a shoot house. All the streets and intersections are used to conduct vehicle stop training as well as other traffic stop procedures. We have a state-of-the-art firearm training that is highly requested to be used across the state. It consists of asphalt out to the fifty-yard line, a berm on three sides, two static lines, twelve lanes of fire each, and is usable at the one-hundred-yard line. Air pilot turning target system for twelve lanes usable up to forty yards, variable-speed electronic moving targets, four station pop-up targets, a two-story shooting platform, and a control tower with loudspeaker system that controls returning and moving target systems. As I had stated, it is highly requested for use. It has been used by the North Carolina State Highway Patrol, Nash County Sheriff's Office, Pitt County Sheriff's Office, Rocky Mountain Police Department, North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement, North Carolina Wildlife Enforcement, the Edgewood Community College Basic Law Enforcement Training Class, Nash Community College Basic Law Enforcement Training, the Edgewood County Fourth H, and the North Carolina National Security Department. Sheriff Atkinson still continues to offer dare in Edgewood County. He's taught in all nine elementary schools, including seven schools within the city limits of Rocky Mountain and Toontown. The Edgewood County Sheriff's Office is the only agency in Edgewood County that offers this education. Rocky Mountain Police Department, as well as Tarver Police Department discontinued their programs until we took over. Just in 2019, over five hundred fifth graders were given this education. We have one dedicated transport officer. In 2019, he transported one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight state inmates, seven hundred and three federal inmates. He traveled a hundred and two thousand thirty-four and a half miles, and spent three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two hours of his time on just on transport. Our criminal investigation division. It consists of, right now, five criminal detectives. There are six positions there. We are unable to staff one of those positions due to our shortage on patrol, but they are maintaining their division, they are maintaining the program. Five hundred and six cases assigned in this division in 2019. Three hundred and thirteen of these cases were cleared. That is a fifty-six percent clearance rate. Thirty-eight polygraphs were conducted. They investigated three homicides. All of these were 2019 arrests that were made. They recovered fifty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars worth of property, stolen property. They solved a string of thirteen break-ins that were targeting the Hispanic community around Battleburg. We have received a drone through donation which will help us crime scenes and searches. I mentioned in the next bullet point that they are one detective short. There's been no clothing allowance increase since 2001. The reason we chose 2001, that's the year that I was appointed to the detective division. In 2001, we received five hundred dollars per year. We received a check for two hundred and fifty dollars in January and a check for two hundred and fifty dollars in July. For the past couple of years, that five hundred dollars has been split up amongst twelve months, put into their monthly paycheck, and taxed. So it has probably been reduced from five hundred to about three to three hundred and fifty dollars per year because of taxes, and we'd like to be able to keep up with the times and see this amount increase in the future. We've received some crime scene processing technology thanks to a donor. We have become part of the IBIS system, which is housed by Rocky Mountain Police Department thanks to a donor. The IBIS system is a bullet identification system. If we have any shootings that we have no suspect, but we do have evidence such as projectiles or shell casings, we can take them to Rocky Mountain Police Department. They enter into this computer system, and if there is another projectile that is known to come from a certain weapon, or a shell casing that is known to come from a certain weapon surfaces to a match, and we know that that bullet and shell casing came from that particular bullet. Soon, we will be deploying a mobile command unit provided by a donor. We have, our investigators are assigned to several different boards such as COR, the New Child Advocacy Center, Edgewood County Sexual Assault Response Team, Edgewood County ACES Trauma Collaborative, and the Edgewood Community College Advisory Board. One of the staff that we lost in 2019 was a detective with our agency. He was promoted to sergeant, and he left to go to Tarver Police Department over a higher salary. We have hosted numerous interns at the sheriff's office. These are students from universities such as North Carolina Central, UNC Pembroke, Leslie, and Camden. They are placed with our detectives. And we also host high school interns and interns who pursue careers in law or law enforcement. The sheriff's office is responsible for maintaining the sex offender registry. Currently, there are two hundred and twenty-two registered sex offenders in Edgewood County, and we are responsible for all of those. Over five hundred sex offender checks were completed in 2019. These checks consist of a detective going to the address where they are registered and physically seeing them there, not taking their word that they live there. We have to be able to establish residents at that address. These checks reveal that thirty sex offenders were not living and could not uphold their end of the sex offender registry, and they were charged with gender violations. Our narcotics division consists of three detectives. They initiate eighty-seven total cases in 2019, resulting in two hundred and thirty-seven different charges. Fifty-five arrests were made, and they still have cases and charges that have not been filed. They remove seven thousand four hundred and two dosage units of heroin, eleven ounces of crack cocaine, fourteen handguns and rifles off the streets of Edgewood County. Their operating costs come from asset forfeiture funds. When Sheriff Atkinson took office, we discovered that Edgewood County was not in compliance with the rules of asset forfeiture. It took us until November of last year to become in compliance. And for this, we had to forfeit eighty thousand dollars in the funds that we could have used at the sheriff's office. Our narcotics officers work closely with the authority of the task force, the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation, North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement, Drug Enforcement Administration, alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and other local law enforcement, for small fires. They have received surveillance equipment thanks to a donor. Animal services. Our animal services division responded to fifteen hundred and thirty-seven calls for service in 2019. We have three animal control officers. Ten of those calls were animal bites or attacked. They're on-call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for care and feeding of animals that we house in the animal shelter. They set and check traps daily for complaints that we receive from residents. Our ABC, free trial release and supervision division. We have one deputy that handles both of these duties. This is just some of the tasks that he performed in 2019. We also received sixteen thousand dollars from the Edgewood County ABC, which is five percent of their gross receipts. This is set by statute. This money is received by the county, and as far as we know, not returned to the sheriff's office. The free trial release and supervision has saved two hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars for what it would cost to house these inmates had they been placed into the detention center rather than being placed on free trial release. Our telecommunications department. They received a total of sixty thousand eight hundred and eight calls in 2019. Thirty-nine thousand six hundred and six of those calls were for the services of the sheriff's office. Seventeen hundred and thirty-eight of those calls were within the town limits of Princeton. Fifteen hundred and thirty-seven calls for animal services, eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty EMS dollars, one thousand one hundred and ninety-three fiber dollars. It was a total of a hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty-three phone calls within the communications center. Twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-four of those were on 911. Fifty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-two incoming calls on our non-mercy and other lines, and it was twenty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-seven half a million. We lost one telecommunications in 2019. She went to the Ivy Peaceville Communications Center, bringing her higher salary. P S A P for this. P S A P stands for Public Safety Access Point, as I'm told. June 30th, 2019, recorded documentation sent by the state. Our fund balance should have been five hundred and eighty-seven thousand sixty-five dollars and eleven cents. We received ninety-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents for a period from fiscal year 2018-19. Spent a hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. The emergency telephone system fund balance for July 1st, 2019, five hundred and six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-two cents. We're only showing funds available of two hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. We are unable to be told where the two hundred and ninety thousand ninety-two cents is. The state's showing that they were received, but no one can tell us where that money is. Outside of law enforcement and detention, we have a lot of programs offered within our detention center focusing on education and rehabilitation. We also participate in community service. This is just a list of programs that we're involved with through the sheriff's office. RAP, which is the Welly Recovery Action Plan, COR, the Coordinated Opiate Recovery Effort, Day-to-Day Dads Program, SOAR, which is a reentry program through OIC, our Junior Sheriff's Academy, our Shine Citizens Academy. This will be our second year. We begin in two weeks. Ms. Powell, Mr. Boswell, I hope you two enjoy it, and I would love to see any of the rest of Edgewood County have a good time. Addiction Recovery Program, Project Lifesaver, a biofeedback program within our detention center, the Are You OK! Program for our senior citizens, church safety presentations, community food distributions. We have deputies who volunteer their time coaching basketball, baseball, and soccer. We have an Employee of the Month program, which is a big morale booster around the office. We conduct active shooter training within the Edgewood County School System. We do pre-prom presentations, and we're also active with our local Boy Scouts. We train our SROs. We receive a robot. His name is Vision. He has been well accepted by the youth in our community. We partner with the Montrezl Harrell Foundation. Our deputies came out and volunteered, our deputies and detention officers, as well as all of our staff, came out and donated their time on Thanksgiving, delivering dinners to community people. We partner with Michael Angel's Girls Club. We have assisted Southwest Edgewood High School and North Edgewood High School in upgrading the equipment in their weight rooms. Sheriff Atkinson has just implemented evaluations for our employees, which there's some argument about the last time that we had it, and most people are saying that the last evaluation that was conducted at the sheriff's office was 2001. Again, our free trial release, our ABC enforcement, and our data. Our motor unit consists of two donated motorcycles. We have a drone program, our college intern program, and our SRO training. This has seemed to be a big hit within the community. The tenant dues, I'm going to say probably for the past six to eight months, has had a food truck come to the sheriff's office about once a week. And you wouldn't believe the number of non-law enforcement people that come to the sheriff's office to visit the food truck. Most of the time when people come to the sheriff's office, it's not really very pleasant visiting. Most of the time when people come to the Sheriff's Office, it's not fully very pleasant visiting. It's because we can't even be in opportunity to come visit with us under a pleasant situation. In the future, you will see requests for funds for many projects. One of those being much need for a handling shop. Upgrades and updates in our detention center. Body cameras. Body cameras are very important in today's day and age. Just today, the sheriff received a subpoena requesting body cam footage for a use of force incidents that happened back in October. We have no footage of that. Our body camera program was ended back in July due to the body cameras that we had reaching end of life. And the sheriff had to make the decision between an increase in his employees' funds, raises in their salary, or body cameras. Our vehicles. We continually need vehicles. We do certainly appreciate the twenty-two vehicles that were purchased back in two thousand and eighteen. All of them have been put to good use. With the loan payment coming out of the capital outlay for those twenty-two vehicles for about the next three to four years, that leaves us very little room to continue to add to our program. Our firearms that we currently carry are at least fifteen years old. We trained with these weapons twice a year. We fired these weapons a lot. We have replaced just about as many parts as we can replace. So we will be requesting new firearms, and it can be at a reduced cost if our employees are allowed to purchase the firearm that they currently carry. Our eight-hundred megahertz radios, these have been in operation for some time, and they're near reaching end of life as well. We have been told that in a few years, the radios that we currently carry will not operate on a new system. Our animal shelter. We continue to get feedback from each and every inspection that's conducted at the animal shelter for substandard conditions. We work well with our county maintenance department, but there's only some that's actually going to do. Some of the complaints that the inspector has that the air temps are too high in the summer, there's lack of space for the animals in storage, there are security issues. It looks bad to prospective adopters and all visitors, and we have to allow volunteers to do a lot of our work due to only having three animals in control. Our detention center, the facility's beginning to show a change. The inmates are able to open some of the cell doors. The steam kettle in the kitchen, the oven in the kitchen need replacing. We need a washer and dryer, and our current plant is not allowed for any purchases. At the moment, our jail annex is unusual due to lack of home and could not be staffed if it was operational due to our staffing issues. Our detention center control panel has recently been replaced. There were points set aside in last year's budget for this project. For some reason, it didn't go through, and we had to dip into this year's budget to complete. Facility cars constant maintenance, and as I said, we work well with our maintenance department. We would like to see one person full-time with the Sheriff's Office staff for maintenance, and it would be great if this person could also be certified as a detention officer. Picture to the left of the screen is the old control panel that was well beyond need replacing. And to the right is the new state-of-the-art door control system. As I said, we have a need for body cameras. When we did have body cameras, we settled a lot of complaints and we settled the equipment. We were able to review the footage and determine if our deputy did work it right or not. We spoke about our vehicles, our service trucks, our portable radios. I want each and every one of you to consider the requests that have been made, think about the dangers that our jobs entail, all of our jobs, whether we're working on the road or we work in the office. We walked past photographs of these three gentlemen today. They made the ultimate sacrifice. This is a photograph of one of our patrol vehicles that was shot on New Year's Eve. We're not sure if this was a stray bullet or if it was intentional. We're hoping that it was a stroke. But this is another one of the dangers that we face dealing in law enforcement, and I now ask the driver of that vehicle to come forward. Thank you very much.
I'm going to hold you guys home. That is me. I'm not immune to danger. I'm sitting in my house, New Year's night, and I'm praying for my deputies that they're going to be safe, and I'm hearing them on the radio going to gunfire. And normally, I'm in the truck, and I get up and work the next day, and I prayed all night long, making sure our guys is okay, took my truck to the sheriff's dealership. The sheriff, who you been in the gunfire with? Nobody. When I come to the truck, there's a bullet hole in the truck. If it goes up, it's got to come down. We do a dangerous job. I thank you guys. Chairman, Lord, county manager, I need your help. I need your help to protect the citizens of Edgecombe County and keep them safe. Citizens, I need your help. I've been on the front lines of being the best trained. I know what it is. I've had the salaries. These families need relief. They're retiring at low wages. They are fighting. I'm watching women back there fight men, some men that I want even fighting. And I've got some strong sisters back there in that jail. I need your help. That is it. I'm not up here to go back and forth. It's not like I'm going to go back and forth. I need immediate relief to keep well-trained people to protect these folk out here. That's what I need. The quicker I train them, the quicker they're coming to get them. And I know what we're saying, and I'm going to relieve some time because I know people got to get home. I get it, and there's people going to say, "Every division they're leaving," Sheriff, I hear it all the time, "they're leaving all over the place." But when you lose law enforcement, when you lose law enforcement, and I got to send a baby to your house to respond versus a ten-year veteran, we got issues. That's when you come into play, sir. That's when the lawsuits come into play. Because I can't keep that eight to ten-year person, because now I got a less than a one-year person going to your home. Same thing for my detention facility. We've got to keep experiencing. They want to stay here. I need your help. That's it. Regardless of the phone calls people call, and they called you today, they called you yesterday, that's not even my demeanor. My demeanor is begging you guys for relief. That's it. We are the leadership of Edgecombe County. People put us in place to protect them, do you not?
Yes, sir.
So my voice is for them. Captain Watts, can I see that tray, sir? And I'm going to sit down and mark, you come towards me. Can I see this tray? You see, guys, when we're battling, you can't even feed these guys on trays. Get them cutting them apart, and now we got to look at rubber trays back in our detention facility to make sure our staff is straight and safe and make sure the inmates are safe. These guys are so smart, they cut trays apart, so now we got to start thinking ahead of them. And they use these to make weapons. That's how dangerous this stuff is. They use these to make weapons, and then the next thing you know, detention staff is unaware of what's going on, and we've got to send deputies and the detention staff in to do a shakedown to find these things. It's constant. There is a new inmate now. It's not like old school days when we can staff the detention facility like we used to. We're dealing with some smart and aggressive inmates, and they're young. That's what we're battling, and this is why, he goes, "Sir," this is why I need your help. That's it. I understand the decisions you guys have to make. I get it. Lord knows I get it. But guess what? I'm tired, but I continue fighting for them because I see what's in our minds, and I see they want to give up, and I see the industry that's coming, we've lost a couple to cornering already. I love the industry, but we can't even compete with a plan that ain't even started hiring yet. They started hiring, they got a couple more people. And what better person would you like to employ than people that have been, they know how to work in enclosed environments? That's detention staff. That's who they're coming after. I'm losing them, and we've got to keep the worst of the worst. And if I don't have staff, we're in trouble. I need your help. That's it. That's it. I get it. I understand. I need your help, sir. I get it. But we're fighting like every day trying to keep quality staff in Edgecombe County. And when you lose law enforcement, detention staff, and office staff, it sets us back, it creates an environment, and my job is to keep all these citizens safe. That is it. And when I got skilled people that I'm training, next month, all of my staff got to fight me. That's unheard of. That's why they getting in shape, because I got to look down their eyes and see how bad they want this, see how bad can they protect themselves when I'm laying in the bed at two in the morning. That's why they got to fight me, so I can see for myself what kind of product is in Edgecombe County going to your home. This is valuable. I appreciate your time. I know we got a lot to cover. I need y'all. I need y'all to protect them. And with that, if I give what I need, we can continue protecting them by keeping qualified people that are homegrown right here in Edgecombe County. That's all. That's all that matters. We need relief because it's disheartening, it's frustrating, and I feel their pain. I have seen that. Help us, please, because it's not giving me the benefit. Help us, please. I'm going to yield to one of my deputies right here, Mark, sir. Thank you guys so much.
Mr. Chairman, council members, thank the sheriff for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Great history, I retired from the State Highway Patrol after twenty-five years of service. A longtime resident of Edgecombe County, have never left, but it on Green Pasture Road, three thousand and nine Green Pasture Road is my county address. Till becoming a member of the Sheriff's Department, which I'm honored that sheriff that gave me an opportunity, I have developed a newfound respect for each one of these deputies and what they go through each day. The men and women in the Sheriff's Department, I stand the work that they do, the extent of the work that they do and what they're day in and day out. The sentiment includes the sworn officer, the detention officers, the civilian staff as well. You will not find a more professional and dedicated staff of the great one hundred counties of this great state. I had discerned this information because of the mediocre pay they receive. Top paid trooper at eight years is going to make sixty-five thousand dollars within eight years. I retired as a district first sergeant with State Highway Patrol Halifax and North Hampton County, got responsible for twenty-one men. My base salary, responsible for twenty-one men, and I don't mind saying it, eighty-two thousand one hundred dollars.
Wow.
District first sergeant now making eighty-nine thousand dollars. I'm telling you, you got to provide for these men and women. I didn't realize the extent that these deputies are working second jobs. Ball games, grocery store, KFC, just to make ends meet. These guys are not even able to provide food for their families, let alone luxuries. I implore you to get to know these men and women. Spend a shift observing a patrol deputy, spend a shift in a detention center, and you'll see what they go through each day and the mediocre pay they receive. You will value the work that they do and the rest they take each day. Protect each and every one of us and the citizens of this county. It will definitely open your eyes and your hearts. I've had several family members, judicial officials, members of the lay community wouldn't even do the work on their salary, let alone ours. I've known Sheriff Agerson for over twenty years. He's like a brother to me. You will not find a more dedicated and caring sheriff for the members of this county, for the members of his staff. I beg you, implore you for all your support behind this sheriff and this staff, both financially and figuratively, because they're here for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Anytime at the end of the word.
No. No, this is just coming as a real good deal, but I guess I'll speak. I think we do value our department and our officers, and we do understand and we give everything that we've heard consideration. And I also have to get some understanding to you all as taxpayers, and we hear what you're requesting and things that we have to look at to honor some of those requests. And I think this board is willing to take that on. So my commitment is that we will certainly look at some of these requests, and we will charge our management team to certainly take a very serious look at it. And even while this board might have the authority to override the management team, the management team brings back to us what a budget was said, and this board has to look at the budget and make determinations in terms of where the revenue is coming from. And we will do that. We certainly will do that. We hear you. We hear you. That's all I can say. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Thank you for this education. Okay, and it's an education to us in terms of the presentation that you have given to this board. It opens our eyes on some things. So I just thank all of you and all of you for supporting the sheriff. I'm glad to see you here. We've gone into public petition, sir, and if you've got something in, I'll bring it in on public petition. Right now, this was a scheduled appointment, so we've heard from the sheriff that if there's anybody that wants to come, the next scheduled item will be public petition, if anybody would like to come and speak. Is it all sheriff from your office?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and the board. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you so much for the presentation. At this time, we will move into the next agenda, and that is public petitions. If there's anybody here to speak, please come forward and stick your name and address for the public record. If there's anybody to speak, this is the time that you can come up, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Milton, that's my second. My address is P O Box one three nine one, Pan South Carolina, I live pretty much in Pan South Carolina, my car rental, my physical address is one two seven Midway Lane, Carver, North Carolina. Stand up for me today.
Excuse me, Mr. Bass, I did forget to say one thing. There's a three-minute limit.
Okay. That's right. Okay. Stand up for me today.
Stand before you today, you know, I've been coming, speaking on behalf of our sheriff's office.
Excuse me, I'll stop you again. That's, the people that wanna leave, go ahead. Let them, you go ahead. People that wanna leave. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, you can stop at three minutes. Okay. After, after. Go ahead, Stan.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to serve on the animal care committee. Um, I think the committee has done a great job, especially me not being, uh, uh, not a, I don't deal with animals, but I love animals and animals, because I wanna get that out of the way. Um, but the other thing, um, everybody know I support the sheriff and the sheriff's office, but when Rocky Mountain was open for a key, I know I should've done that, but I told the sheriff, if I were you, I would go work on him, making all that money. I'd go another if I could. But anyway, um, Edstone County Sheriff's Office underpaid even the sheriff himself. We are losing some good deputies and staff because they are going to other cities and towns where they can make more money. This is a shame. Edstone County Sheriff's Office is the best sheriff office in the state. But that is my opinion, but I stand behind it one hundred percent. What I will say is that our sheriff's office are called upon by other agencies to assist them in their term of need. Uh, sheriff deputies have to cover in underground and workouts and all kinds of levels, holidays, among other things. I remember when I learned that some of our deputies were going to another county to help with the flood a couple of years ago. The deputies got flooded in and could not drive out. My heart went out to these deputies who were willing to go into a county that they probably have never been and to help to endure the flood and the folk who were in distress. I know what the Edstone County Sheriff's Office goes through because I am actively engaged in the community. I also had the privilege to obtain a certificate for training the first annual shine citizens academy. And I don't tell them, I think I had to lock them up because I might sneak them in because I told them it was not a dull moment. That was held last year, and we'll be, and we'll be helping you this month. I encourage everyone to sign up and learn what the E, E, E C S O have to go through on a day-to-day basis. You'll be glad that you did. Trust me, the terms that we, the means are held will not be a dull moment, and you will be excited about attending. I'm calling all folks, Caucasians and especially Black leadership in Edstone County, the sororities, preterites, and especially retired folks of all races, who do not have to worry about retaliation, whom have been silent on this issue for past a half couple of years, to come out of your comfort zone because these folks protect you and I. The Dr. Martin Luther King holiday just passed, and it sickens me how folks dress up to go to events in the margins and don't stand for anything. I understand that uniform religious groups consist of pastors or ministers or meetings, so when, when will you speak up on these issues? Again, I wanna thank our Edstone County Sheriff's Office for all that they do. Thank you.
My name is Teresa Edgar-Horn. My husband is, I just told you, he's a detention officer at Edstone. He's a working, works with the court and transportation. Um, tonight I'm here because I'm, I'm very concerned, um, I'm worried about the situations down at the jail. I see day in and day out what they have to go through, not just my husband, but what the other officers have to go through. And it's dangerous. Somewhene he leaves at six in the morning, the transport is on the way, uh, six minute, uh, from six AM to six PM. And it's dangerous. He has to travel Charlotte, King, Curtisville, and sometimes by himself. And I'm, I'm concerned. I'm concerned and I'm worried because of times they're living in, and it's gonna get worse. I pray every day for the, the staff, um, and, and I'm just concerned. I'm, 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 while he's at work, I'm, I'm constantly praying because of what they have to face there. He's in the midst of murderers and all type of, of crimes, you know, that has been committed by these, you know, inmates. His safety, um, his mental state, their mental state. And I'm not just talking about my husband, all of them. Those officers, they have a dangerous job. And, and the pay is, is not, they just don't get paid enough, and it's hard on the families. I've even had to come out of, have a dis, disability health issue. And I had to go to work just to maintain my dignity, and it's hard. They need your help. They're overworked, underpaid. Their safety is at danger every, I mean, every day they go to work. They don't know what they're gonna run into from each day to day. The morale can get low. And it's just a dangerous job that they have. And I'm here tonight just to stand over, not just my husband, but all those awesome officers that go in every day, and they're surrounded by criminals. So I'm begging, they need help. The families need help and support. And as the gentleman said, it's gonna get worse. Our communities depend on, on, on these guys. Families, we, we need help. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned. I mean, I spend most of my time praying for all their safety. I've seen, I've seen what my husband go through. He gets off of work, he comes home. He don't say anything. Even tonight, he says, don't say certain things backhand. Because if it concerns him, it concerns me, it bothers me. And all these officers, they deserve much better than what they're getting. So I, I urge you all to help this office, these great men and women that go in day in and day out amongst criminals. Dangerous work. And I, I've heard so many times of, um, statistics talking about Edstone County with parks in Edstone County. I don't believe that. I believe we're greater and better than that. We can do better. Pay these men and women what they deserve. Pay them. So that they can better protect us, the county, the community. They deserve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Amy Williams, Teresa Way, Robert Drive, for. I'm gonna speak to you very briefly about the sheriff's office and how they get short of sleep. Number one, it is not the first time y'all offered a new animal shelter. How many times have I been to you already? And I'm gonna keep coming. I had, I had somebody contacting me on Facebook in Thanksgiving, another county, about fifteen dogs that somebody's in the hospital dying. Do you know how many dogs a shelter can hold? Twenty. So if we had one person that had fifteen dogs, and we already had strays in the building on stray hole, had nowhere for those dogs to go. And it is not right for animal services to have to euthanize a dog after seventy-two hours just because there's nowhere to put it. Not when they're healthy, adoptable dogs. It's just not acceptable. The shelter's one of those funded a program. It's, um, kind of a private grant that we were able to get. In three or four days, we've already scheduled over thirty surgeries. People won't be getting their animals fed, so we're trying everything we can to get it done. The shelter does multiple rabies clinics a year. Can't remember how many rabies vaccines Eugene gave last year, but I think it was around six or seven hundred. And just on my end of that, when you have people that work for your sheriff's office that are on public assistance because they don't make enough money to support their family, there's really something wrong. That is sad. So please consider their salaries. I've looked online. I don't see any pay scales. But, but to know that there are people out there on the streets protecting us that are having to get public assistance because they're not getting paid enough by the county that they're trying to protect, that's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Brian Holland. I live, uh, seventeen thirty-six Pine Tops Chris Road in Pine Tops, actually Chris Community. But on the morning of January eighth, approximately four AM, I go to work between two and four AM in the morning. I came out my front door to get in my vehicle, and my road is Pine Tops Chris Road. The road beside me is South Road. There was a car, he wasn't sitting directly like he was on turn left or right. He had his lights angled towards my utility building. When I went out and warmed my truck up, I just felt uncomfortable. Make a long story short, I called the sheriff's department, and within three minutes, there was an Edstone County deputy in my yard. Uh, I just wanna say, since Sheriff Acton took office, I've noticed, uh, a lot of good things in the community. I was born and raised in Nash County. I've been in Edstone County for twenty-five, twenty-six years. I think the money that these men and women make protecting us is absolutely ridiculous. I currently have family members that work for Nash County Sheriff's Office, and it's just absolutely ridiculous what these men and women, the, the things they face, uh, the drugs, the people they have to deal with, the type of people they have to deal with, the things they deal with, the things that the, the gentleman presented tonight. Just, I just think it's ridiculous for those men and women to work under the conditions that they work under for, what they get paid for. And I would ask you to consider paying them what they deserve at late three times.
Chief of Sheriff Acton. I'm not coming as an employee of the sheriff's office. I'm coming as a citizen of Edstone County. Thirty-eight thirteen Old Vine Road, Rock Mountain, Rock Mountain. I've been in detention cell for almost eighteen months. I have thirty-one years of correctional experience. I retired as a correctional administrator. When I retired, I was probably making more money than sheriffs making now. I've worked at large facilities. I worked at small facilities. I've seen all sorts of staff. I've had to manage teenagers. I had to manage adults. Working at this detention cell has really done something to me. I had an employee come to me, said that he was leaving, going to his party place. And right then, I knew that I had a problem. I've had sleepless nights since then, trying to figure out how am I going to maintain quality staff and recruit staff to protect the citizens of this county and to protect the visitors of that detention cell and the staff that work there day in and day out. Dealing with violent offenders, gang members, who feel like they can do what they wanna do, when they wanna do. And our staff have to maintain control over those offenders. We lock them behind a door. As soon as staff leaves out, they're able to manipulate the doors and open them up. I got a staff that has to make rounds twice an hour in those parks. I got female staff have to do this. Would they pop those doors, manipulate those doors when our staff are walking down those corners at night and pull them in and say who God knows what to? We have to do something. Or we gonna be like the situation I had a little bit since, because staff weren't trained, because staff weren't assembled, they were overworked. And look at the lawsuits they're facing. You pay now or pay later, what you gonna do? I expect for them to maintain security and control of those inmates. I expect for them to make rounds twice an hour, as required by the state. And if they don't, we have to deal with it. We just did four corrective action plan because they did not make rounds according to policy. I didn't wanna do it, but I have to. Because I realize they're underpaid and overworked. We are not about, not eight positions short now, five pending. One going to fire department, possible. Couple going to corner. And I told this, I told my corporate that came, and he told me he was leaving. I said, look, do me a favor. Keep this on your hands. I didn't want him spreading that because I know the rest of them gonna follow suit. If I can go and make fourteen dollars an hour and not having the stress, not working a harsh environment, what am I gonna do? What happens when they leave then? If five or six leave, I got thirteen openings. That means I got staff that's definitely overworked because we're short of staff. We gotta do something. With our revenue for the jail of years over detention is over a million dollars. What the sheriff deputy and those guys bring in revenue is very easy. I realize you all gotta take care of the rest of the county too. But the sheriff office needs to be considered. We get ten percent, they get two percent. You justify by, look at what did the sheriff office revenue they bring in. They protect you. I've been in the system with D that many years. DPS public safety always got, the state always got more than everybody else got because they protect the public. It's justifying. You gotta wanna do it. You gotta understand what our staff are going through. And if you could want, say you working for the public, then you gotta look out for them in every area. And it's your own responsibility to sit down and come up with a plan to say that we gotta give these sheriff, this sheriff office more money to continue to protect this great county. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ray Hines, and I live at three oh four approach, we in Palm Grove. And I'm a detention officer at the detention center. And I'm gonna give you a little insight from the inside looking out. Everybody probably feel like, yeah, we're trying to show what we're offering about money. But it's not about money. It's about love, honor, and respect that we have for each other. A lot of times, we have to go through a lot of stuff that we can't even talk about. When you all get off work, you might go on your loan and say, hey, honey, how was your day? And you can discuss what those are. We can't do that. Because we are legally bound by law, this stuff, we can't even discuss it. So we can't, you gotta pick this stuff by the love. Whatever issue you got at home, you gotta leave that down and pick it up when you get back home. You can get caught slipping, it either your life or you snuffed out. We do it because we care. It's our convention, and we share a love for our women, love for our brothers and sisters. And no matter what we're going through, if I get up a lot of times, I don't feel like telling you, I feel I can do better. And I do have a reason I can do better. But if I do that, I let my brothers and my sisters down. I broke my chain. And I only do enough, because I gotta go through the fight, do it. I can't let a fallen soul to fall, and I don't be there to help them. So what I do, when I do get up, I say, yeah, I gotta stand with them. If one of us go down, we all go down together. We're not gonna let a soul to fall and not be up for them. We're gonna support them, and be where we should be. Because this is my family, just as much as the family I was born in. And you're born in your family, so whatever that happens, you get. But you choose your friends. So I can't deny, deny the love that I have for them. And I just gotta go forth and continue to do so. Because whatever happens, we gonna do this together, and it's about this. We do it not only because we care and it's our community, but I can speak real for myself and the rest of them when I say it. One other thing we do get out of this, no matter whatever the trenches we're going in and stuff we go through, when you're walking up high and you see that one little individual with that light in their eye, and you know that you have touched him in some way to change him, it makes it all feel like it's not working right, because we have saved one. We will go through the trenches for that one if we have to. Because if you are part of this problem, if you can talk about it all you want, but if you're not gonna get in my terms of things, and do another solution to change it, then you're just as much as part of the problems in my head. We have to stand face and take that way right for our, the sour community, and understand that.
Shane Bonio, uh, forty-one eighty-six, plenty of gear ready, rocking out.
Shane Bonio, 4186 Platteville Road, Rockin' Mountain. Well, change the gears a little bit, but not too quick, Mr. Chair, board members. I want to reiterate everything that everybody said here about the Sheriff's Department. I know Sheriff Cleve personally, and since he's come here, I can tell you things have naturally changed. And if we're losing him, then we're going to be at a great loss. It's bad enough out there as it is. I've on, there's times that I have to call him, have rental property, have to call the Sheriff's Department. And I can tell you that it has been a change since Sheriff Cleve's taken over, he's been on. I know, Mr. Chair, you mentioned about the budget. You got to go back and look at the budget. Well, if you ain't got the body to protect the budget, they will come get your budget. Sometimes we have to bend that budget to make it work. We don't need to keep losing these experience options. Okay, thank you. Change of gears. The reason I'm here on behalf of, as President, Farm Bureau. I came up and spoke indecently about the ban on tobacco. And in the January meeting, we found out it was overturned. We thought we had an understanding that this issue was going to be re-integrated and there will still be specific places that designated for smoking. We felt like the job to get that thought, that a total ban on all property was not feasible. The detention center and jail was kind of problematic. You want to tell me you're going to stop those inmates from smoking? You can't police it?
The inmates don't smoke down there?
They don't?
No, sir.
Well, other properties like the landfills here, you know, administrative space. We need a smoking designated spot, some type of compromise. You know, when you go to a landfill or a dump, trash dump, these are places that, you know, how are you going to police that? You know, we're asking these guys here, we're talking about it underpaid and overworked and we're putting one more law on, that they got to enforce. This law enforced it. In saying that, we feel that it was voted on in one day, when they turned around and voted on getting a ballot, a public hearing or any public forum.
I don't, okay, we had recessed. How did we do that?
It was two separate hearings.
Two separate?
Hearing last month was.
We came back after separately, and we went over there. And we think differently. And we did do it, and it's a whole different thing. So we met the requirements. Is that correct? But you are right in terms of it was something different. So I'm going to ask the board to speak on, any members that might want to speak on that because there were some changes, as you stated. And there was a change of some of these members in terms of what he voted. But I'm going to ask those, any of those that would like to speak to, because some of us supported the position that was initially came to us and some did not. There was a change. If anybody from the board would like to speak, you can, but you do not have to. But I follow your point. But as it stands now, the ordinance is no smoking on county-owned property. Is that correct? Or leased property. So how are we going to enforce it at the county legislature? I can't tell you. Okay, so the employees then will tell them no smoking, okay? Or it will be signage or that, but that's just, I can explain it according to what the legislature says.
Well, this has been turned over twice. We would ask y'all to revisit that and give us consideration.
And I am saying that as a proper request. Is it a timeframe or if you can do this, is a timeframe you come out?
Just the fact that for the ordinance to be amended, it has to be another public hearing.
If you give it the manager, it can be put back, it can be put back on the agenda. I don't know what the position of the board feels, but I think a citizen or your own position can request that. If you get with the manager and he will, you will put it on the agenda. Is that correct? Am I doing that correct?
The board will need to call for a public hearing if you're going to consider a change.
Well, you need to bring it to us. Is that your request now?
Yes, sir, it is.
We don't usually make a request. We use a similar style. We don't usually let and make that kind of request. Have we ever had, Dr. Assistant come up, if something has come through the administration? So that will not be at this meeting. If you put it on the agenda, we can like put that request on the agenda and call for that public hearing. That's the way we can prove it, sir. Am I incorrect?
Since I've been here, yes, sir.
If you make a request to him, sir, that will be done.
Thanks, sir.
We can vote on it again. We can vote on it. We vote on it. The board, I'm not saying that we deserve to change. If member of the board is asked us to reconsider, and I think we have the responsibility to reconsider. I do, but I'll take board direction of that, if there's anybody that wants to speak on it.
I think we've already voted twice.
Any other, if there's anybody else. Since I'm only hearing from one, we voted twice, that means we can vote a third time. I'm not hearing from the majority of the board. And the majority of the board, if majority of the board is saying it is done, it is, if the same member that voted on that speak now, we have a position on that.
I voted the same way all votes.
Yeah, but that's the speaker.
Now, if other members want to change, they'll vote a third time and speak up.
But that appears to be the majority. If you put it on the agenda, we appear to have already have a position, yes, sir. And that is that they're wanting to stay as it is. But I'm still not saying it should not be on the agenda. Because I don't think we can, we as a board can prevent citizen participation in every way. I take it correct. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm speaking on it. And I'll take directions from attorney and the manager to turn it.
Well, sir, we can bring back before you to the next meeting, consideration, call for a public hearing.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Excuse me.
Okay. Small quarter, 3930 Meadowbrook Road, Rockin' Mountain. I have just come off as President from Farm Bureau Board for 15 years. And I was not at the meeting in December because I had another meeting prior to that yet. And it troubles me that we came in and talked about this and it was voted on. And at the next meeting, unbeknownst to any of us, there was people that came in and spoke differently. And swayed the thing the other way without maybe, I guess, the proper justification was there, but it didn't get to us. Since then, since then, we had decided we would come back and ask for explanation. At 3 o'clock this afternoon, my phone rang and I got my explanation. The county health board members called me and said, "Would you explain your side of this to me?" And I said, "Absolutely. I explained my side." I said, "Would you explain your side to me?" And he said, "Absolutely." And what we got out of that was that our two groups should meet together and see if we can compromise on this and bring something to you. We had no idea when this was coming. We know it now, but we didn't know it then. So we're asking, can the two groups come together if they're willing to and come back at the next meeting with a compromise?
Well, I believe it's an excellent suggestion. I think this started with Human Service Board. Is that correct?
Came with a recommendation.
It came with a recommendation from our Human Service Board.
Right.
But why don't, I think it's an excellent suggestion.
So let me just say one more thing before you take off. In my 15 years, it's probably been my dropping the ball. I used to come to all the meetings, but there was very little work done in the agriculture community with the commissioners. Some things we did work on and we got things coming. I got likes and I come to the meeting. I didn't know this was coming up, so I dropped the ball on this. But what I would like to come out of this, however the vote happens, is for the committee, the commissioners to be able to come to the Farm Bureau Board when they're in something that deals with farming and talk to us and let us help you through that. So that we can come to decisions together in the community is what we would ask. And this is a good start.
Well, I'm going to kind of bring this back at you in terms of, if there's something that impacts the farmers, I'm going to ask that the staff at least inform the form you of potential for changes because I don't think all of us are going to, all of us cannot come to your meeting, so.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking that. I'm just saying, let us know what's going on. Because we're not at every meeting and let us help. You know, you don't know everything about farming. We don't know everything about running the county. But if we will work together, if we can make decisions that don't cause people to get upset.
Well, we're going to make some decisions that people don't disagree with. Part of what we, that people don't agree with. But that's the reason that we are here and sometimes we might not be popular. I've been here over 20 years and it's, but it's important. This change came about because advocacy groups got involved and came here and asked this board. First, it was the farmers and then it was the health, the public health community that asked us. And as a result of this, this board made a decision. And according to what I'm hearing, it went through the legal process, the process that we require. I would hope that the farmers and the health community could come to us with something that they could agree that. But even if you don't agree, we've got to make a decision, okay? And if you could come up with something that you could recommend, that they could recommend to this board and that this board might find, I certainly think it's a good idea. So I'm asking you to, through the, Mr. Evans, to make sure to tie them in with our next meeting, Mr. Johnston, and that them talk to the Health Service, Human Services Board and see if there's a willingness there to propose something, okay? They might not, but they need to have that opportunity. I think that we can make that happen. You got the information you need? Yes, sir. Is anybody else to speak?
My name is Hope Wood. I live at 505 Newbury Road, Paulborough. And I come to you as a member of the Human Services Board and also the Health Department Advisory Board and the DSS Advisory Board. Our main concern is the health of this community. And it's not against the Bible. It's for the health of the community. And I'm not sure how this became a Bible issue. It became an issue where we, we're very strong that we need to improve the health of our citizens in Hedges County. We get statistics every year that indicate that we are 99 or 98 at the bottom of the health of our entire community in Hedges County. And that's why we feel like it's very strong that we need to try to do something about smoking in the community. Everybody seems to know, if you know the statistics, we're higher propensity, higher rate of heart problems, high blood pressure, stroke. And I've just read something recently about a couple of weeks ago that 30% cancer rate went down because smoking is helping. So it has to do with our smoking. And I also have relatives in my head, my wife and well. And I assure you that if people want to smoke, they want to smoke. But what we're saying is the average of others that have rejoined the hospital and many other agencies, as a matter of fact, other cities across the state, and trying to ban smoking in county buildings and public buildings. You all going to do that at the city? You can't smoke in the city property or in the city building or vehicles. People will adjust. People will get upset, but it's not trying to do anything in harm to the farmers. We're not doing that. They can still produce a problem. We're not outlawing tobacco. What we're trying to do is provide another avenue for our citizens to be healthy. I would also urge the commissioners to give incentives for people, health incentives for people who do stop smoking. We do that for weight. Let's do that for smoking. I'm sorry that the farmers feel like this is an attack on their profits and their property. It's not. We are not against something. We are for something. We are for the health of our community. We have to do something in Hedges County. These statistics, we rely upon our Health Advisory Board, we rely upon our Human Services Board is because year after year, for the last 20 years or more, our public health in Hedges County is down. I would like to commend the commissioners and the state for bringing the jobs. That should help. People will have health insurance that will help our entire community. But we have to have a healthy workforce. And one of the ways, sure, statistics show what to look at. One of the most important things is stopping people from smoking. And we can't stop people from smoking, but we can also say, "This is a safe area." Now, people going to smoke when they get home. And I assure you, my wife, she works at, we're friends. When they stop smoking there, she stopped smoking there. But they didn't stop what's going to smoke at home. So we're not saying, "Don't smoke." We're saying, "Don't smoke on the county property." And this is also a recommendation from the state. And we are glad because we feel very strong that we, as a committee, we have to lead our community in health issues. And we're hoping that you all will respect our recommendation and we bring it to you. You don't have to always agree with our opinion or other issues considered. But this is very important to overall health of Hedges County.
And is anybody else to speak? Here are non-publications. We move on to the next, in light of consideration of approval of budgets and then message. Anything else you'd like to our attention?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out a couple of those. You'll see number one, the narrow number that tight top right corner of the budget. I did want to point out that this is reallocated, reallocated some of the Sheriff's Office staff to, for deployment, for year one, the body cameras. About 30 of them, certainly, that were over the limit, they need Sheriff's staff to make it. And we felt like this is a way to help some body cameras in the Sheriff's Office, so that.
Mr. Ed, did we not buy some body cameras about five years ago, about a year ago? They're already out of the, we have some shares. And that was with a grant.
Chair, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Chair, did we not buy some body cameras about five years ago? And their life cycle was five years or less?
Yes, sir. And what had happened was, we started to see, it's a good question, Mr. Ed. We started to see what those, they're kind of on the low end. And we were not able to see the footage as well. And so we did get a question from an attorney or what have you. I mean, just kind of like you're there to play that game.
So they still work. They're just not up to the standard we need.
Exactly. At the end of life, and myself and Mr. Evans, we've been in contact. Myself, Mr. Evans, and Axon representatives have been in contact. So I'm pleased to say that we're working towards that goal.
That's $275,000 that we're about to approve. I thought it was $274,000.
Yes, sir. That's the current budget. We're moving $13,000.
So it's $13,000 to buy 30 cameras? So how many cameras do we have?
We have 60. We've got 60 deficits.
I make a motion that we approve $26,000. So we're going to do the 13 and I make a motion we approve 13 more thousand dollars for the general fund to the earmark for body cameras in the Sheriff's Department.
We need it for protection. We want to be transparent as possible. And Axon, so you guys know, it's the clearest camera, body cam that's out. And I just got to leave the thing to the commissioner rather than go put new money to old stuff.
Oh, just make sure. Is it set? Oh, sorry. Oh, they favorited me on that one, so I had. Anybody here? Anything else?
I'll point out number eight, a budget amendment number eight. You'll remember a couple of months ago we approved it because of the good hard work that staff put in. DMV, our LPA office downstairs, we received some bonus funds. So I just want to point out to you that this budget amendment is to appropriate our seat of bonus funds, fifty-four hundred dollars to the, to that office. You do have.
We've got two of them.
Yes, sir. You do have two, two more that came across my desk as we agenda packed together. You'll see the one for the planning inspection offices fair routine budget amendment moving between line items within the apartment. Also for emergency services, that is again moving funds within that office line items. I do want to point out, we've had some discussion earlier about Medicaid cost settlement and the report that has to be done, particularly for rescue services. So this money primarily is being moved for a contract and we're gonna do, for someone to do those reports for us. Hopefully that will help us to improve what we receive in Medicaid cost settlement for rescue services. That's all the ones I was wanting to point out. Certainly I haven't answered a question that you.
Motion approved. You got a motion? Second question. All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, here and none, it is approved. Pete.
For item B, presented here for consideration is a resolution from the League of Women Voters. Twin Counties, this resolution recognizes the one-hundredth anniversary of passage of the Nineteenth Amendment. The U.S. Constitution gave women the right to vote. I believe we do have a representative here. I don't think he's coming back. And I do recommend that you approve the resolution.
Would you like to come in?
Yes, thank you. Melanie Goss Bradley, President of the League of Women Voters. Twin Counties, eight seventy-five thousand, wrote it, wrote it down. I repeat, that I appreciate that you heard me last month. I'm not gonna repeat myself. But for those who may not know, a hundred-year birthday is a great opportunity most of the time for celebration. But this resolution is a commemoration only because we are in somber recognition of the fact that here in North Carolina, the General Assembly did not ratify the Nineteenth Amendment in nineteen-twenty, a hundred years ago. And in fact, worked with other states to prevent the passage of the amendment and kept suppressive laws on the books against women and did not ratify the Nineteenth Amendment in nineteen-thirty or nineteen-forty or even nineteen-sixty. But only in nineteen-seventy-one, less than fifty years ago, did the North Carolina General Assembly ratify the Nineteenth Amendment. We have had more years with Super Bowls than we have had voting rights for women and ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment in the North Carolina General Assembly. But we can change the past, we can take a step to the future. And I appreciate you adopting this resolution commemorating one hundred years of voting rights and one hundred years of the League of Women Voters.
And we have a copy of the resolution. Now, agenda package is that motion? Move. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved.
Eric, we have a friend signed. We need to picture with her. And.
That's your request. Sir, come on up.
Thank you.
We signed this, but she gets another, right?
Mr. Eric, since you are a woman in the League of Women Voters, I think I need to do this.
Why don't we let, why don't we let somebody else take it and let this hers be in this stuff here? Mr. Johnson, yeah. She wants to be in both pitches, okay? Mr. Tarver, just stand up here.
Yes, please. And please, Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, I'm getting on everybody's own. Her, her camera, you got the problem. Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you. C, Mr. Evans.
Item C is regarding the anti-poverty plan for Need Incorporated. Need and Action for Evenness and Equality, Need Incorporated receives federal funding through the Need Services Block Plan Program. Requirement of program is to submit an anti-poverty plan. This plan discusses their strategies for eliminating poverty within their service area. A copy of the plan is included in your agenda packet. No action is needed of you. The Need Incorporated is required to distribute a copy of the plan to you prior to its submission. You are also to be given an opportunity to submit your comments along with the plan. Mr. Janelle Rogers, executive director and CEO of Need Incorporated is present tonight to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? Can I raise your hand, Mr. Rogers? That's Mr. Rogers. You off the hook, no questions.
As a member of that board, I just wanted to make sure that Edgecombe County citizens realize that Need Services, Edgecombe, Nash and Wilson Counties, they help low-income people with job security. They help people get into housing, they help. They also help some people who need to go back to school to improve their job security. So we want to make sure that everybody in Edgecombe County understood how they're located in Rocky Mountain. They serve Edgecombe, Nash and Wilson Counties. And if you have any questions or you know someone who reviews those services, feel free to call the Need Office. And that's why we wanted our record to come so that you would know who to ask for when you went to the Need Office to find out those for other citizens who might need those services. We wanted you to know. It serves three counties and we want to make sure that Edgecombe County is participating.
And we have, we have a board vacancy, though. No, we have one.
Yes, that is true. We have a board vacancy in two positions. Is that right, Mr. Commissioner?
They are what? They're.
One is for our low income and then for private organization as well.
They can live anywhere in the county.
There, it's a specific district. I don't have that paperwork with me, but it's a specific district in Edgecombe County.
Please get us there so we can try to fill those positions.
We can do that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Consideration approval of right-of-way easement from Edgecombe Martin. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
We, we didn't have to go on that, go ahead.
No, sir, no. Right-of-way easement, Edgecombe Martin, item C is a need of this easement. This is all property that the county owns near the intersection of Highway six-four alternate and Dunbar Road. This is actually to, to put in place two poles where they will put in support wires for the transmission line that's actually on the opposite side of Dunbar Road. So, and we determined that it will not hinder in any way development on the property that we own. So my recommendation is, recommendation that you approve this, this.
Motion.
Motion to approve, is that.
Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Pete.
You have for you an amendment to the contract with S and N Need Incorporated for professional services related to the Frenchville fifty-three acre development. And you'll see there's detail there, memo as well as the proposed change order, the need for this change order. This will result in the addition of seventy thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, increasing the total contract price to two sixty-two, six sixty-three, seventy-five, which is ineligible because under the North Carolina DRA agreement that we have. So I recommend that you approve the amendment.
One question, I'm approving. We, we have complete control of what we do. In other words, we, Chancellor has approved of us making these changes. Has the Chancellor's Board acted on this or do they have to?
The board does not have to act on this change order because we hold up the grant, we hold the contract. Now, I do, and that does bring up a good point. I do want to note that S and N Need has completed the process of developing the site plan for the fifty-three acres. And as you remember, our role is not to approve the plan, to leave that to the town. That has been presented to the town and they have voted to approve.
This is what I stood.
Yes, sir. This is some additional work related to that project.
Motion. Motion, understand, and questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Consideration approval of change in front of appropriation of Brazwell Memorial Library. You see it in your packages. It's a reduction in appropriation, is there a motion? Second, move, and second, questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Pete, Mr. Evans.
U.S. Census Bureau has asked us in the past to, and other units of local government, to appoint a census liaison. You have previously taken action to appoint Ms. Cynthia Jones, Planning Director, in that, in that role. As you are probably aware, Ms. Jones has recently accepted a position at the City of Rocky Mountain and be ending her tenure with us on this month. So I recommend that you appoint Ms. Patina Brazwell, who as I've seen at planner, as the twenty-twenty census liaison. And Ms. Brazwell, if you understand, if I can see.
Is there a motion to approve? Please. All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, she is approved.
I'd also like to announce to the board as well as to the public, Ms. Brazwell will serve as our interim Planning Director during the time which we give that position.
Have you announced it? Ms. Jones will be leaving.
I just said it. And I do want to.
I thought you were replacing the wife you were here with.
And I do want to thank Ms. Jones for her service to the county.
We, we kind of also like to thank you.
We hate to see her go, but we congratulate her.
Sorry, sorry that she goes. When I said, oop. Consideration approval of change in mileage reimbursement rate, is there a motion to approve? Second, questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Appointments? We have Nurse Home of Doug Carril Riser. Ms. Stephanie Walker's interest and willing to serve, is there a motion to appoint Ms. Walker? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Carolina Gateway Partnership. Private sector, we have Mr. Richard Henderson, is recommended, is there a motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. East Carolina Life Bar Arena Board, you read the memo. Mr. Jeff Langs has resigned and Jeff Langs is his son and familiar with the duties of that job that being recommended. Is there a motion to approve? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none. Let us complete our release, our release is for review and approval. Any questions or comments, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, I have to answer a question.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Second, questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Contracts for review, anything for the board's attention?
Just want to point out that this one contract here is for engineering and related services for the Asian County, the Asian Project. Both for the county, there's fifteen properties on that list. And for the county of Frenchville, there's seventy-five properties on that list for engineering services and project administration. This is all grant funded, goes by fee.
Motion. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, side aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Department of Reports for the Water Services, you've seen that report. Any, any, anything for your, that you need to bring to our attention?
I do want to mention, particularly for item A, Water Service, the Water Service Department. You had some discussion last month. And Matthew was here and did a good job of talking about water loss situation. He's been working on identifying the main suspects and the reasons why we see and trying to, and from there, working on trying to identify some strategies to, to cut back on that water lawsuit. So that'll be an ongoing project. I like, we'll come back to you and discuss that a little bit more.
And I think it's a detailed report and I read it. There's some things in here maybe I got, I'll have in terms of, the strategies anyway, in terms of, we talk about reducing the water cap and what the cost is currently. Other words, the, you know, charging for those, in those districts that might. Don't we have an ordinance that deals with, if you're in a district and don't get the service? Don't we have an ordinance in place for that?
Some of the districts, that's in place because of the funding that required that.
Oh, is it? Okay.
We, we do have an overall blanket policy for the county that if water is available, you've chosen for whatever reason not to tap on. And at some point, your well fails and water is available, we will not issue a permit for your well. And same for sewer, sewers available, we won't issue a permit of theirs.
But I think there's something we need to continue to express in terms of strategies. It is a detailed report, thank you for the report. I read it. And any questions from the board? But we still have a really big one, honestly. What it is that we're dealing with. Anything else on those department reports?
I'll just quickly mention item F. There was some discussion from you last month about franchise agreement that had been approved for Army and Transport LLC that the county has had no activity. So we've since, from emergency services, our emergency services director sent a letter basically saying that that franchise has been resented, serving if they.
We hear from them.
They, they can always come back and apply for it. And they are aware of that.
They are, they're almost aware of that. Anything else on those?
That's it for.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, move on to managers' report.
Under managers' report, you've seen it there. We have been, if you haven't driven out that way lately, we've been having some logging going on out at Kingsborough, Dustford Park. You'll see in the report, we receive some revenue already, starting to receive some revenue already from that. I, I do really, item C is more for, more so for the audience. I just want to remind our audience members that the twenty-twenty census is coming soon. The official start date is April the first, but people can probably expect to start receiving information in the mail before that. Be sure to be on the lookout for this nice junk mail. We want to encourage as many people to participate as possible. Two thousand ten census, we had a seventy-five percent participation rate. Our goal is to try to increase that to at least eighty percent. We have a number of folks in that are a part of our Lee County Committee that this board formed and play. I want to thank them for their hard work. We've been trying to do a lot of things to get the word out. So just a reminder to our citizens.
Hearing none, so would that remind our citizens there are jobs possible with the census campaign. So please go on the website if you have a young person that needs part-time jobs. That's a good idea to work that. They're paying very well. I'll make sure some basic all county gets some of those jobs.
And I have some handouts here. If anyone here is interested before you leave, please come by and take one. We do have a page on our website. Anyone can go to our website, edgecombecounty.gov and find them. Then you can go to a page, we've got lots of information, including the number to call to apply for those census jobs. For item E, I know the meeting has gone long, but I'd like for Mr. Johnson to come up and just to tell you a little bit about how it's been going. just tell you a little bit about how it's been going with our solid waste permit implementation.
Good evening, board. On January 2nd, 2020, the solid waste permit policy went into effect. Today, February 3rd, we began to nine customers at the convenience sites who did not produce the proper permit required. Our offices are still receiving a lot of calls from citizens who do not receive a permit in the mail, and our staff are doing an excellent job of helping citizens receive their permit. Just an anecdote, I recently helped a citizen, Mrs. Fascal, who helps many of our Hispanic population navigate the rules and laws of various levels of government. We were able to help her understand the process, that she can relay the message to our Spanish-speaking population to ensure that they have what they need going forward. We are continuing to discover, discover some property that was not listed with the tax office, and are going forward, and going forward with taxed appropriately. We are also discovering properties who should have been charged a solid waste fee on their tax bill, but were not, and stat has made those corrections. Just a reminder to the public, any property that was not being charged a solid waste fee but should have been, will need a bill from the tax office for that solid waste fee. To date, we have sold $1,100 worth of permits to municipal citizens, meaning people that live in town who typically do not have a right to our convenience sites, but they have paid the $100 solid waste fee and now can use our convenience sites. At your May meeting, I plan to come back and present to you the numbers from the solid waste department, I do not want to make any estimates at this time, but we believe the costs incurred by the county to ship household waste from our site to the landfill in Berthie County will come down, so in May, I will come back and review some of those numbers with you. Citizens who have still not received their permit and feel they should have, still can call myself at 641-5775, or the solid waste department at 827-4253. If you guys have any questions, that's all I have.
I've been asked by people who live in a rental property, and they want to know if they can get one, and I was like, whoever owns the property, I believe, can get one.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
So, now, if you own a trailer park and you have a hundred people out there, what happens?
So, we, the tax office generated a list for me of homeowners or property owners who have multiple dwellings on a property. So, the, the solid waste fee isn't a tax attached to your, your land property, it's attached to your real estate property, your home. So, any landlord that has multiple mobile homes on a given property, say, I received a list from the tax department, and they received the adequate amount of permits.
Okay, so they're in the middle of a hundred people.
Yes, ma'am.
And they, they will show up.
Yes, ma'am, and I've run into that a lot, I've run into instances of a landlord where someone would give these permits to their tenants.
Right.
For various reasons. In the policy that you guys passed, you did make a caveat for that, as long as that renter can come to the landfill, show that they are renting that property, either through a electric bill or some means like that, they can pay $10 for the replacement cost and get a permit.
And my mother-in-law is one of them.
Yes, ma'am.
She lives in a home, she does not actually own it, but she worked on that farm for so long that the people who own it have given her lifetime rights. So, how would she get a permit?
So, if that home is in an unincorporated area, her, my first suggestion to her would be to ask the owner that received the permit if she could get those permits, because she's the one living there.
They don't live in that, they don't even stay.
Yes, ma'am, but the second option would be to then just, through a utility bill or some means, show us that she's living there, and she could pay that $10 replacement cost and get a set of permits, yes, ma'am.
If your mama, mama-in-law, daughter-in-law, son-in-law. We can never hear that, bro.
I can bring you to be able to name them.
Bring us $10.
I'd like to propose the date for our joint meeting with the Edgecombe County Public School Board, February 24th. Just to, I want to, do want to point out that typically, we have one meeting sometime in March or so. This year, I would suggest, I've talked with superintendent, that we should have two meetings, and this first meeting to talk about National Rocky Mountain, the legislation regarding that, the impact, because you know, one of the first steps of that was going to come upon us next year, with the stipulation that Rocky Mountain's participation in providing that gap funding for current expenses will stop. So, we need to start talking about the impacts of legislation, so our recommendation is, and their board is considering the same thing, if their board were to do today, February 24th, we suggest we have dinner at 5:30, the meeting at 6:00.
I'm personally.
Yeah, but that's not a very.
How do you argue about 6:00?
We suggest that we eat later, probably in March.
Dinner starts, propose at 5:30, so when, what time would the meeting start?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
We had said, "Meet," sorry.
Could you get that?
I might get robbed late, but I, and they normally last hour and a half.
I have asked Mr. Evans and the superintendent to revise the presentation, okay, in terms of some of the way they've been, I think, show it, show that.
But this is not the presentation, Mike, this is going to be a discussion. So, this meeting will be specifically about National Rocky Mountain school issue. We will then have a second one to talk about the budget request and that.
Well, with this one, this one just might, it'll be the time, because you can't tell how long we've been having this discussion.
Over and this will be in Rocky Mountain, most likely, the community policy.
They, no, they will, this is for Edgecombe School, so they will.
This is, this is.
I'm sorry, Edgecombe.
We will have that meeting.
Yeah, we're going to have really, it's really going to be three meetings, because we, this one, this one, we kind of require to have.
And, and the school system is going to host us at one of the schools, I don't know their student yet, but as soon as I know, I'll be on the.
Go ahead.
Item G, I want to point out, and I mentioned earlier, with the appointment of the interim director of corporate extension, Art Bradley, who was recently hired for district director position, and so his ex is Miss Amy Heath, who's been with corporate extension. But Miss Amy Heath is the interim director of corporate extension, we're happy to have her in there, and I will be working along with the folks at NC State on, the position has already been posted, and I'll be participating with them in the interviews. Item H, I want to mention, we, as you know, we've been having monthly meetings with Edgecombe County Rescue Squad, you know, we have monitoring issues that were discovered a couple of years ago, most of those have, you know, of a budget nature to it. Just to remind you, this current year, in your budget, you approved $1.2 million appropriation to the Rescue Squad, from our meetings and what they're reporting to us, it looks like that's not going to be enough to make it to the end of this fiscal year. And so, we're not at the point to, to bring a request to you for additional funds, but I want you to know that that's likely on the way. But we are also having some discussion with the Rescue Squad about, you know, how do we move forward, what kind of structure do we want to have move forward, what kind of oversight we want to have if, if the county's going to put in additional funds, so I just wanted you to know that that conversation is going on, and that we'll be, you know, working on some more, on more specifics that we'll be bringing back to the board, you know, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, commissioners report, anything you can say.
One last thing, just, just a reminder, it's not on the agenda, but just a reminder that the dedication of this room to Commissioner Felton will be on the 21st at, at 10:00 a.m.
And then?
That's it for my, thanks.
So, if there's anything that we do, just best, before we make sure we get a call through.
Yes, sir.
For this day, okay. Commissioners report, anything to be.
I've got two things.
Go ahead.
One very brief thing. I have experiences myself with my wife and, so I've also had a couple people in my district. It's been a hard time getting people from the county to return the call, I'll talk to Mr. Evans about specific departments, but, you know, the citizens of the county need to be called back, I have to adjust them, try to attempt six times to get 10%, and I know she had white blood, she was going to break, but. Second thing I wanted to bring up, we probably tried to talk about it, but I think part of the snafu we were facing tonight with the farmers and with the health individuals, was partly my fault, because I was going to make the motion that Mr. Van Smut from the county property, not allow Mr. Reed to amend the content. However, what ended up happening is what should have happened to start with, and I think we handled it a little, it was not handled that way. We allowed both sides to come together in this room to discuss the issue, fortunately it not worked out exactly as I thought it should. Regardless of how the voting ends, regardless of how you vote or who you vote, I'm just saying, we need as curators, as leaders of the county, allow people to get together and discuss that before we try to dictate to them what we want to do after listening to both sides, and I think that resulted from the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Peters, I made the motion, it was about the ban from the front, and then I allowed Mr. Reed to amend it to say county property, is that correct?
Generally, I interpreted you as withdrawing your motion, so that's where the snafu came from.
I don't put it too as a snafu. Regardless of each one of his personal private opinion of what we're talking about tonight, what we did do tonight was a great thing, allowing people to get together and discuss that instead of, of just trying to push it one direction, and that's all I'm going to say. I learned a great deal, and have learned a great deal through this, too. I spoke to a lot of the Department Bureau folks on Monday night, they were very convenient to me, and these people, whether you agree or disagree, whether you help them, whether you, that's what democracy is about, that's what we're allowing to take place here, and that's the way we should have done it, we started, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
And I took it as, the meeting as, and, and a meeting that, when the public comes in, we respond to, the public came, the public, it was two different responses, in terms of, and that was based on the fact that the public stood there and asked this board, and depending upon who that public was, and we are political, and their political body, they, they change in their decision based on their public input, while, while we disagreed differently, it was just a good, the first time I've seen it happen to them in this board, but it did happen, but it was a good experience to me, that's the way, when, when people come and put the pressure on this board, and this board makes a decision, and that was an exercise of what the public came to, that's the way I view it, I didn't view it as a snafu, I didn't, I visited as, as, as a good work in progress, while I disagreed with the decision, it's still a good, a good work in progress. And boards, and it's good that board does not have, boards do not have to be unanimous, but boards have a sentimental opinion, it's, it's a good board, it's a working board, and we all agree something is, something is wrong. Next, any other questions?
I wanted to say, as a member of the Human Services Board, we have a open meeting, it consists of the DSS Board and the Board of Health together. That meeting is open to the public to come whenever there's a need, that they can come to discuss their opinions. So, we want to make sure nobody shows up at the DSS meeting, Human Services meeting, Board of Health meeting, and then it blows up, so we need to start taking advantage of opportunities to attend each and every one of those meetings and give his opinion.
Speaking of census board, I believe three months ago, I was appointed to the Health Department Board, but after not receiving a call, I found out that I was an unfit candidate. Yeah. Because I do not also serve on the Health and Human Services Board, and it was given needed to be a member of the Health Board, representing the commissioners, who also would serve on the Health and Human Service. Can you strike me out on that?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, it's in the, the Human Services, Health and Human Services Board vials, and in order to serve with either one of the advisory boards, you must be Health and Human Services Board member.
Well, I thought, I thought you put on the, local government, not region L, one people want you on region L.
I'm on that, but I was also, you put me, I was, took that home, and I was on, I was on a wearout until I was, I had a call, so.
Y'all not liking me or what? Vacancy on the.
The question is, I don't recall that because I'm the, I'm the person that serves in the county.
I don't recall, I don't recall.
Mr. Johnson called me and told me about.
It was requested of one of my department heads that I could serve, so I called to give a heads up, and then when I went back to my vials to check, I realized that you were not over.
Everybody's cool.
But when you tell, when a staff tell a commissioner they're not, you know, okay, so it puts, it puts them in an awkward, it puts them in an awkward position for a staff to tell a commissioner they are not, you know, so, so it, I don't, I, because I didn't, I know I didn't remember us, us, I do a resume, I'm putting you on the region L, but I don't remember, so the board, it's not something that the board should actually know, but, no, if, if there is a vacancy, he does, he does not necessarily have to be put on the board as a commissioner, he can still serve on the board. Is there, is there a vacancy?
I'm not 100% sure.
Check, check, check and see if there is a vacancy.
I'm not advocating for such, I'm just, I was attempting to do my science uses, but I, I promise you, I'll never get too deep on my britches. Well, I don't know.
He says, he was put in an awkward position, had to tell you, you weren't eligible. And, and, I'm trying to, okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're scheduled for closed sessions to discuss economic development and personnel, is there motion for that? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, side aye. All opposed, here it none, who would be joining the closed session?